This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I have to start over. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
This meeting of the City of Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals will now come to order. It is 6:02 PM. My name is Tony Arklevich. I'll be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are... Ari Goldstein is present. Mary Newbauer is present. Is Brian on yet?
Yes, Brian's here.
Okay, Brian. Joe Fitzgerald, are you here on call? No. Okay, so we have more than a quorum. Brian Cafferty, Ari Goldstein, Mary Newbauer, and myself. This will be a virtual meeting, as you know. Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, will be at the controls. There will be a period for public comment this evening after each variance request has been presented. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. You will be instructed as to how you will access this opportunity. Speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members, and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. First order of business, we don't have minutes to approve, but the minutes, recorded minutes, can be found on the City of Kingston website for all of our meetings, including last month's October meeting. This evening, we have one agenda item. 21 O'Neill Street, SBL 56.25-2-15. Board four, Zone C3. This application came before us, came before the board at last month's zoning board meeting. It was tabled. It was an original request for a reduction from... or not a reduction for a variance for 33 spaces on the street parking. We tabled that to allow Eric Sternolio, the applicant, owner of ERS Real Estate Holdings LLC, give him an opportunity to reexamine his business plan and come back to us. So this evening, we have a re-commission from the original 33 on-street parking spaces to 15. A new request for 15 on-street parking. Before I forget, I want to enter into the record. Each board member received several letters of support. All of them were in support of the variance. For Mr. Sternolio, 21 O'Neill Street. I'll just read the names. I'm not going to read the letters. They're all in support. Matt Dilling, proprietor of Light Bright Neon Studio LLC. Linda Marsden-Reed, executive director of Art Smith Hudson. Tripp Thompson, from the Beverly Lounge. Aaron Stutz, owner of PAKT Kingston LLC. Jason Kaminsky. And Miles in the Lunch Nightly team. All letters in support of this variance. As you recall, board, we had the application for a variance of 33, as I said, onsite on-street parking. This has been narrowed down to 15 on-street parking. This was accomplished primarily by a reduction of the outdoor seating area, which was approximately 2,000 square feet. It was reduced down to 200 square feet, reducing the number of parking spaces on the street needed. Reduction from 20 to 2. So that square footage was reduced by about 90%. The rest of the square footage for the office area, bar area, retail area, storage, all stayed the same. And the number of parking spaces by zoning code remained the same. Mr. Sternolio, did you go to the planning board then in the interlude to get a... to present your case for a waiver by use of the municipal lot? Did you go to this planning board and what was the result of that?
Yes, we did, and they denied it.
Okay, so that was denied. Okay, you've put together, again, some nice charts here of what you feel are available on-street parking spaces. Four different diagrams and then one large one. And then you also did a study of the number of spots that were available of those 92 at various times during the week, weekday, and I believe weekend. So you did show that there would be available spots on the street of those 92. Now, just so we're very clear and then the board can ask their questions. You do know you need to go, if this is approved, the variance is approved, you need to go back to the planning board for a special permit as per the zoning code?
Yes.
In Zone C3?
Yes, we are... Their meeting is actually this coming Monday.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're all set up for that.
Okay, great. Now, by reducing that from 2,000 to 200 square feet, that's a significant reduction, as I said, about 90% reduction. You feel comfortable that this reduction will lend itself positively to your business by doing this, by reducing it by so much that you'll have a positive outcome still? You'll meet with planning goals?
Yes, definitely. We looked on it. As the backyard in our original plan has more of an amenity than a necessity.
Okay.
So, yeah, a small outdoor space is still totally doable for us.
Okay, Stan? You know, we're supposed to call Dan if he isn't here. Remind him, let me just... Just bear with me for a minute. That's a corporation counsel. We got our meeting, Dan. Did you forget? No, 6 o'clock. You're on, okay. He thought it was 6:30. I don't know why. Let's wait for him to call in.
Waiting for an attorney, what a concept.
What a concept, right, Brian? Do they turn the clock off while we're waiting for them? I don't know.
He's one of the only people getting paid.
Well, I mean, you need an attorney and we're waiting for it, not Dan, somebody regular. Dan on yet? Dan?
I hope he can hear me.
There he is. Hi, Dan. Okay, Dan, I was just reviewing with everyone that this application came before us in the... our meeting last month and was tabled. And Mr. Sternolio was going to review his business plan and see if he could make some adjustments to it. And he has made an adjustment. He downsized the outside eating area by 90% from 2,000 square feet to 200 square feet. And so his requirement now is not 33 on-street parking, but 15. And I entered into the record several letters that we board all received in support of this endeavor. And I'm just now asking Mr. Sternolio if he went to the planning board, and he did, and he was denied his waiver for the municipal parking lot. And now I have just asked him whether or not he feels comfortable with this large reduction in the outside seating area as his business plan will be able to meet his financial goals. And I'll let you answer, Mr. Sternolio.
Sure, thank you. So, yes, we had viewed the outdoor seating more as an amenity than a necessity. So I'm totally confident that this is not going to change the financial prospects or the success of the business.
Now, I need to just caution you, and do not take it other than a friendly caution. When you go to the planning board, the dimensions that you are using in your chart for the parking calculation will need to be presented to the planning board with those numbers since we are making our decision based on those numbers. And more importantly, when you're granted permission for the special permit, you need to adhere to those in your operation or you'd be in violation if assuming that we approve this variance. We're going to approve it based on your numbers that you provided, including that. You need to adhere to that. My question is, do you adhere to that business philosophy? Okay? Do we understand, Dan, totally?
Yes, totally.
I'm going to open it up to the board. I will make my comment that I had said I had read the last time, the last meeting, on the New York State Area Variance Criteria. And one of my biggest concerns was whether the requested area variance is substantial. I feel that you have made an effort to reduce that substantial number of 33 by almost half. So my concern on the substantial piece is relieved somewhat. The other was whether this was self-created. You know, probably still stands, but I do want to qualify that the criteria of self-created as a consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. So it's not as essential as the other criteria. So with that being said, in my opinion, you have reduced that criteria of substantiability quite a bit. So thank you for doing that. Board, any questions for Mr. Sternolio?
Yes.
Okay, Brian.
Anthony.
You're on, Brian.
Hi, Eric, how are you?
Hi, Brian.
So I know the concept is built around a beer garden. And I... And thank you for your efforts to reduce the impact, at least initially. I'm gathering that with such a huge reduction, you know, it's your intention, if the opportunity arises, to secure more parking, that you'll want to try to expand your exterior space. I mean, with COVID-19 and everything else, obviously, having more space outside is going to be helpful to you. So the question is, is it your intention to just keep searching for potential opportunities to find additional parking that you can add to your plans to expand?
Yes, but I would say that that's, you know, in the future. If something presents itself, then I would be happy to look into it and come back to the board to expand our outdoor space. But at this point, we are happy with these new plans. And that's really our focus right now.
And the surplus space being that there's a large narrow parking area behind the building, and I'm assuming the parking space, I mean, the 200 square feet, 10 by 20, you know, area or whatever, is immediately behind the building and accessible from inside the building. Do you intend to use any of the back area for parking?
No, because the reason is because of the driveway, if you remember.
Yeah, ingress is an issue.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, we don't even...
I'm sorry. I was just thinking that with ingress and egress being an issue, I was just thinking, like, would you use it, for instance, just for, like, employee parking or something like that?
Yeah, we did think about that, but we also... We're going to install a barrier at the end of the driveway so that people can walk in and out without going through the inside.
Right.
So our driveway is going to be really blocked off.
Yep, okay.
Very good.
That's all I had.
Great questions, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Questions from board member Mary? Any question? Ari, anything? Question?
No, I have reviewed the graphs and maps included and appreciate. I think that the reduction in the street parking fits very well into the available street parking that's on O'Neill Street. And I... Eric, I appreciate you putting in the legwork to get those.
Okay, yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. Now, you're cutting your outdoor space down from 2,000 square feet to 200.
Right.
And looking for 15 on-street parking spaces. And the interior of the building is going to be used also?
Yeah, the interior is office area, bar area, retail area, storage. And those number required parking, 4, 6, 2, and 1, stay the same. And then you have 2 for the outdoor. Yeah, 15.
Okay, okay.
Bar area, 501 square feet. Retail, 698. Storage, 813. Office area, 1348, so.
Okay, okay. Now, I guess my question is that, you know, given the circumstances with COVID, right now in New York State, all bars and restaurants have to close by 10 o'clock. If that was to continue, how is that going to affect your business plan?
Well, there's an interesting part of all this is that because of COVID, I know that bars and restaurants have been... I don't know if it's considered a waiver, but they've been able to have more outdoor seating than they're allowed to because of COVID. So I don't know if that's possible for us to have more just because of COVID. But if not, we added the retail element to the bar in order to have basically people be able to come in and buy beer to go because specifically of COVID. And if we're not able to have people come inside or not have people come inside as long as we wanted, we would still be able to sell beer to go.
You've considered COVID, and you're still planning on going full speed ahead with your endeavor.
Yes.
I turn it to you.
Guys, there's some background noise. It's hard to hear.
Yeah, everybody's mic is off. Brian, could you just turn your mic off, please, and Mary?
It's not me. I don't have any background noise.
No, but the mic is on, so we keep the mics off.
But I don't have any noise. Somebody had their mic on. It was background noise.
Okay, all right.
If there are no other, if there are no other, you know, questions or whatever, I would like to make a motion based upon the revised plan.
Mr. Chairman, there are four, five callers here that want to speak.
No, I'm just going to tell them that. Okay, do we have callers? Yes, Don?
Mr. Tullerman has his hand up.
Okay, name and address?
This is Don Tullerman. And I wanted to just, first of all...
Could you give your address, please?
Yes, Don Tullerman, 104 Fair Street. So I want to first acknowledge and, you know, that the board is giving this a second look and is being flexible to the applicant. I think that's great. I just want to give a different perspective from, really, from the city's comprehensive plan and the city's open space plan. The open space plan was just adopted at the last city council meeting last week. I'm sorry, this week. So the open space plan was officially adopted as part of our comprehensive plan 2025. So how does that apply to this? Well, let me start with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan lays out a vision for our city that has a lot of initiatives that we strive towards. And relative to this applicant, the city is striving towards becoming more of a walkable city. We're striving to become a more bicycle-friendly city. And we're trying to create a place where people are going to establishments, such as the proposed applicant establishment, not using a car, walking. You know, walking from their neighborhood. Or if they can't, if they're too far to walk, they ride share or they take the bus or they take Uber or they take Lyft. And in this case, the location between the rail trail to the north and the Broadway, which is the Broadway to the south, which is being completely redone with the new sidewalks, it, to me, is very much in line with the vision of the city to be less dependent on cars. So, and I know that we are going to be working on the code in the upcoming years.
Glad you said that, Mr. Tullerman, because I was going to interrupt you and say, we... I served on both of the zoning revision committee. And to accomplish those things that you're talking about and my colleague Ari talked about last meeting, we need the zoning language put in place because we have a legal obligation to follow the zoning.
That's right.
Not as wished. And you can do that process going. We had wonderful consultant ready to come onboard with climate tuning, but I don't want to dwell on that too much because we have other people who want to talk, but...
Okay, well, let me just a quick response to that. I brought... I wanted to bring that back to the council, that rewriting our code. So tonight's finance committee meeting at 8 o'clock, I've introduced, you know, a motion to bring that back. And so that's going to be on tonight's call. And Anthony Tampon was invited to speak to that point also. So I'm with you there.
Okay, thank you. He's a good representative.
Yeah, so let me just finish. So that's the comprehensive plan. But the fact that the open space plan was just adopted this week is significant, and here's why. The open space plan essentially says that we shouldn't develop more. We should try to retain what open space we have because it's healthier, it's better for people, it's better for our community. So if we are trying to not build on land that hasn't been built on, then we need to make more use of our built properties, such as this. And so that speaks to density, that speaks to creative use of properties. So this, you know, so even though I get that the ZDA is only enforcing the code and that's what you're charged to do, just keep in mind that the vision of both our open space plan and our comprehensive plan points to a future where establishments like this beer garden are accessed more by people riding their bikes, walking, and Uber, and lifting, and carpooling than driving. And so hopefully, you know, that will weigh in on consideration.
Yeah, I share your vision, and thank you for bringing that to the finance committee again. I was at the finance committee, and it was ready to go, and something called the COVID came into play, but ready to move along. Are any other callers would like to speak? Please identify yourself, since I can't see you.
This is Stephen Blauwies.
Okay, your address, please.
77 Cornell Street.
You need to spell...
Short factory building.
Eric? Should he spell the name, Eric?
Spell his last name, please.
Yeah. B as in boy, L-A-U-W-E-I-S-S as in Sam, Sam.
Okay, got it.
Go ahead, caller.
Great. All right, well, thank you, committee, for considering this. And I just, I've been in Kingston for about over 20 years and 10 years in the neighborhood. And I just find, I'm so glad Mr. Tullerman, Don Tullerman, presented that. And obviously, the whole parking, 30 cars, is so antiquated. It makes literally no sense at all. I mean, that... And so I understand that the committee has to go by the existing law. So I'm glad to know that that is being considered and addressing. I mean, under any circumstances, that just seems... What restaurant in Kingston would ever have 30 cars? Doesn't make any sense. And also, just that that's being... That's my neighborhood for 10 years. And I know, as, I don't know, some of you might know that I am an historian of Kingston, very deep historian, for quite a number of years. And I could certainly say that that is one of the saddest blocks in the city and that the city isn't bending over backwards to have some kind of development of someone who's coming in in the middle of a pandemic to work with them and not make them go down to 10% of their space and then saying, "Okay, fine." And I know the law is you're working within the law, but I just find it saddens me to see all of this heavy weight on someone trying to, you know, present something. And just one more point is that even the, what would be considered competitors of other businesses, as you said, that the letters... I would have loved to write a letter, but I just couldn't get to it. But if you notice at the beginning of this meeting that all these other competing restaurants are for this. So, and it just seems like everyone should be working to come up with a way of helping more than cutting them down to such a short, a small space and then saying, "Fine, you can do it for 10% and you only need to cut the parking in half if you go to 10% of your space." Anyway, that's my comment, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Any other callers wish to speak?
Yes. Hello?
Name and address?
My name is Chris Reeif, R-E-I-F. My address is 21 O'Neill Street.
Okay.
Right next door to this potential beer garden, which I think is a great idea. My question is about the parking that is being designated for this variance. How does that affect everybody else that lives in a neighborhood that has no off-street parking for their houses? I mean, are these spaces going to be, say, "Hey, you can only park here if you're for the beer garden"? We lost a lot of parking off of Broadway with the bike trail, which I think is great, but I don't think the city took the initiative to do additional parking somewhere. We still are motor vehicleized. Hopefully, they can do something with the vacant unemployment office here and make a parking lot that is well-needed. As much as we want to go to bicycles and walking, we still need parking. People come from out of town, they're tourists, they need to park. So basically, my question is, these spots that Eric is looking for, I don't know where they are, are they going to be designated just for him? Or it's just, as it is now, first come, first used?
I'm not going to get in a back and forth with you, sir, but I will answer your basic question. There will be no designated spots, just as there are no designated spots for the other vendors and proprietors in the neighborhood. There's no...
That's my only concern. That's great. I think, then I think it's a good idea that he should be granted his variance.
All right, well, thank you very much for your comments. Any other questions? Any other, any other call to speak? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we've exhausted everybody. All right, at this point, board, unless you have any other questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this, this variance from chapter 40534J, parentheses two, for 15 on-street parking spaces as per the square footage designated by the applicant in his chart for his parking calculation. Do I have a motion? Ryan, second?
Yes, I tried to do this, um, 10 minutes ago, but.
We have to give everyone a chance to speak.
Yes, I, I, I understand. I, I think, I think the ZVA, even though we've been, even though we've been given counsel from, from folks, we, we have worked pretty hard to try and balance this out. I think, I think that Mr. Sternelio, Sternulio is gonna, is gonna do just fine. And I think as opportunities present themselves, he'll be able to expand the area in the back. And this is a good start and I wish him well.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do need, I do need a second on this motion.
Me, I second.
Okay, Ari. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Let's, let's do a poll because we're in a virtual here. Mary, yes, no?
No.
Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Ari?
Yes.
And I'm going to be a yes also. So this passes three to one. Okay, Mr. Sternelio, you have your parking variance. You now need to go to the planning board and get your special permit. And good luck to your endeavor.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, really appreciate it.
And I'm glad that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The alderman was here, uh, that made that impassioned plea and now is going to put some meat on the bones with an actual movement from the common council to hire a consultant to redo and put into play some of the things that our colleague Ari talked about last meeting, so.
Yeah, I just would like to acknowledge the fact that Ari made all these points. Um, and, and I couldn't agree more with Ari and the alderman about how we need to move to more walkability and everything. But I also agree with the neighbor who, who, who also acknowledged that we're still, you know, an auto-centric culture and that that's an issue. And it's a tricky neighborhood, so.
Well, yeah.
With the proximity to the rail trail, I heard Ari last week and I did acknowledge it, that a lot of that business hopefully will be walk-in business and bicycling on the trails. So that will alleviate some of those parking needs. But we do have, I just want to make one other point. There is a, quite a lively establishment, and this was really what prompted me with my vote, that there is quite a very active lively establishment over on Foxhole Avenue that so happens, one of the letters in support came from the owner. And I've passed, I've passed that establishment on Friday and Saturday nights. And the amount of on-street parking is very, very significant, but the difference is they are grandfathered as a pre-existing non-conforming drinking establishment that used to be the Foxhole Tavern. That Eric, you probably are familiar with the Foxhole Tavern, right? On Foxhole Avenue?
More familiar with the promised land than the Foxhole Tavern.
There you go.
But on a Friday and Saturday.
We're going to stroll down memory lane, you, you old con.
There's a lot of cars parked on the street and that's even more of a residential area than O'Neill Street. So thank you, board, for showing up. Thank you, Dan. Yeah, thank you, Eric, and everyone have a good evening and be, be safe. This thing seems to be, this thing seems to be heating up again, so.
Yeah.
Just in time for Thanksgiving. Dan?
Be safe, everybody.
Okay, Dan, do you have something? Good night.
Just saying goodnight.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, Dan.
Let's adjourn this meeting. Motion, Ari, Mary, second?
Second.
Adjourn it at 6:38. Wow, what a quick meeting. Okay.
Okay.
Eric, I'll bring the signature sheet down tomorrow, all right?
That's good, Tony.
All right, everyone.
Have a good night.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Thank you.